Good evening. I have seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz?
Present.
And Mr. John Welch?
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Bel Air resident and pastor Mark Poston to lead us in prayer. Poston.
Mr. Mayor, let's pray. Father, we're just so thankful for this day, for this season, a season when many of our resident families are ending summer activities and thinking about the beginning of fall. And Father, many of our residents are heading back, our families heading back to school. And Father, we're so thankful for those who serve in our schools, our administrators, our faculty, the staff, and just bless them as they go back into classrooms. Father, we're thankful for the mayor, for the council members, for the service that they provide for this community. We just pray that you would just bless the meeting tonight, the agenda items, the discussions, the decisions, which is just direct with your wisdom. We thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to have the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is to determine agenda additions. Do we have any additions for the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This consent agenda contains only the minutes of the July 15th city council meeting.
A motion to approve the consent agenda is listed and I'll throw it to Mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? That motion carries five to zero. Appropriations budget ordinance encompasses expenses from July 9th through July 29th, and expenditures amount to $2,288,855. Of the reported expenses, $567,353 are infrastructure costs for new developments, and those costs are paid through special assessments. Any discussion about the appropriations ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean?
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-14.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any questions or discussion? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. We have no city requested appearances this evening, so do we have any citizens' concerns? Any citizens who'd like to speak to the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, would you like to make the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 24th, I attended the CCU A meeting. The main item was we agreed to purchase some new meters that can be calibrated for the water side of the operations. And June was a rough month. That much volume is difficult to treat, to go through the process. And the utility manager said it was also pretty strong as well. The strength and the volume made it a rough month, but he contacted KDHE, and when we complete our project, if we have those heavy rains and strength, that'll do a better job of treating it before it goes back out in the affluent. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I have no report.
Mr. Schmidt?
I also attended the CCU A meeting, and also I had some, a couple of requests to the team, send them to get looked at. There were some culverts that we had along Woodlawn that looked like they might be kind of falling apart a little bit. So I appreciate, I'm glad that the city was able to get, just take a look at them and see what needs to be done. So I appreciate their efforts to take a look at that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. David?
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the CCU A. Nothing more to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do have a report. It's a little lengthy, but bear with me here. So on July 29th, I did watch, like many in our community, the live stream on YouTube of the tri-governmental meeting on shared services and opportunities for collaboration. This is between Cedric County, the city of Wichita, and the USD 259 government bodies. While there wasn't anything specifically to report on, as far as the city of Bel Air, as you know, approximately one-third of our property taxes is for Bel Air, and the other two-thirds are other jurisdictions. This is just approximate. And so those in Bel Air are taxed by Cedric County and the fire district and the school district. So I just say this to encourage anyone that is concerned with property taxes and rising costs to stay engaged in these conversations, as any future decisions to collaborate could have an impact to those budgets and to those costs of those governmental entities. There are potential opportunities that could reduce redundancy, overlap, whatever you may want to call it, where it is not needed to potentially create efficiencies and or provide more effective delivery of services. That said, it is important to understand combining or consolidating services can also sometimes have a negative consequence, such as eliminating or reducing levels of service. This, the themes that were discussed, just to kind of summarize, and were a result of a previous community town hall earlier this year. The discussions sort of revolved around several themes: family and community well-being, mental health and social services, diversity, equity, and inclusion, education system improvements, civic engagement and governance, infrastructure and environment, arts, culture, and economic development, future ready centers, and then crime prevention and reduction. The items that seemed to get the most focus were family and community well-being, mental health and social services, and potential opportunities for concepts such as community schools to provide more services throughout the community and those existing spaces. In addition, there was sort of a lengthy discussion on future ready centers and impacts, which are, there are several right now with USD 259 schools and the impacts to pipeline of workforce and good jobs in our community. I think the discussion is great, and I thank all the leaders and citizens for continuing to work to find ways to better serve our community and encourage continued engagement in that process. Also, on July 29th, I met with the new principal at Isley Traditional Magnet, Allison Renner. The purpose of the meeting was to introduce myself as both a parent and a community leader. We discussed various items from drop-off pickup procedures, traffic flow, and the recent traffic study that USD 259 did for Isley, traffic parking in Central Park neighborhood, and the efforts that are underway by WAMPO for safe routes to school planning that Isley is participating in and is a priority school site for. I also made her aware of the 53rd Street Path project that will be underway shortly, and the efforts that the city is taking to review options for a better crossing of Woodlawn. And then on August 1st, I attended the K254 Corridor Development Association Steering Committee meeting, along with Mayor. The main focus of the meeting was planning the agenda for the next general meeting on August 15th, and also discussing an approach to planning and participation in KDOT's local consult meetings this fall. And then lastly, last week was a wrap to summer camp for Bel Air Rec Center, and I just wanted to thank our staff and the campers for a great summer. I'm always impressed with what we do with our staff, with the summer camps and the camps they put on. They make regular use of the pool. They have great field trips. It's always so well organized. So from personal experience with my two kids, I always enjoy seeing that time well spent. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll move on to Mayor's report. So a couple pictures up there on the screen, and I'll go through what they are. The one on the, so on Thursday, July 24th, I attended a meeting by the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition that was celebrating accomplishments, and these include the state mental health hospital being built in Wichita. Once operational, this should result in a significant reduction in the jail population, comprehensive care expansion to a 24/7 service, and others. One in particular note is the WSU mental health technician position. This is a certificate program that people who want to get an entry-level position in mental health can obtain a certificate and be qualified to provide basic aid and care. So also on the evening of July 24th, and this is where the pictures come in, I attended a farewell dinner for Colonel Damon at McConnell Air Force Base, and that is the picture on the right up on the screen. So this is, he has been the CEO of McConnell Air Force Base for the past two years. He's now moved to work at the Pentagon. Several of his local mayors were in attendance. In the picture from left to right are Mayor Price of Andover, Mayor Wu of Wichita, Colonel Damon, Mayor Allen of Mulvane, and Mayor Stats of Derby, and then myself. And then on Monday, July 28th, I attended the change of command ceremony at McConnell Air Force Base, and this is the picture that's on the right that you see up there on the screen. And on the left in that picture is Major General Bolton, receiving the command flag from Colonel Damon. And to Colonel Damon's right is Colonel Walls, Wall, not Walls, who in turn received the command flag from General Bolton, and is now the CEO of McConnell Air Force Base. On Tuesday, July 29th, I attended a tri-government meeting, as Councilmember Dean had spoke about a little bit. That consists of the USD 259 Wichita and Cedric County. Well, much discussion appears to be focused on regional transportation. This could be a benefit to Bel Air and surrounding communities if truly regional system can be created. WAMPO did a study of this idea a year or so ago, and I'm encouraged that these governing bodies are now considering pursuing this. So including the school board, since they operate so many buses in Bel Air, there are about 80 per day, I don't have that count, during the school year, to go to and from Northeast Magnet High School. And I want to thank Councilwoman Hamburg for chairing the CCU A meeting in my absence, and for Councilmember Schmidt for filling in as well. So appreciate your, your willing to step up there. So on September 4th, there will be a regional water submit from 8:30 to 1:00 PM in Newton, and this is being put together by REEP. So if you want to sign up on that, contact Marcy Akcock at REEP. And so I'll now ask our attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council's August workshop is next Tuesday. The plan was to present the second half of the water code revisions, specifically Articles 4, 5, and 6 to you. Articles 4 was focusing on backflow prevention. Article 5 is talking about drought procedures, and then Article 6 is about the enforcement and penalties for the entire code. We had a staff meeting last Friday. It was very productive, a lot of progress made, but there is final work that needs to be completed. Consequently, it will not be provided to you next week, but it will be at your September workshop. What needs to be done? We are cross-referencing with the wholesale water sales agreement with Wichita of 2007, just to make sure that there are no requirements or anything that we need to consider when it comes to backflow prevention. Secondly, confirm KDHE's requirements for backflow prevention. Of course, EPA cares about the purity and that we keep our water safe and secure, but each state has a responsibility, and the KDHE is that enforcement for the state. They may have specific preferences, but we are looking at the legal authority as to what we are required to do. So that way, when the governing body hears it, you know exactly what your parameters are if you want to modify anything within the code. We need to clarify which department is responsible for which portion of the processes that are identified. It's a lot of processes. We have different directors involved and different staff, so we need to fine-tune that. Finally, we're going through the definitions to make sure that they are transparent and that we are all accountable in our specific roles. The second thing I will update on is the Bel Air comprehensive plan. It is going to go in front of the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, August 14th at 6:30. The reason I'm bringing this up is because if the Planning Commission approves, it will be adopted as a resolution, which states information such as the date of notification, the date of the public hearing. Then that resolution will also say that the Planning Commission is going to ask the governing body to approve their recommendation, and that would be adopted in an ordinance. Just to prepare you, one of the things with the comprehensive plan, I have not seen it. I don't know how large it is, but if it is so large, and the Planning Commission would rather adopt it in pieces, somewhat similar to the water code revision, that's possible, and that's allowed per statute. I don't know if that's going to happen, but I just wanted to share that with council. My final update is some city attorneys met. We met last week. What are we talking about? We're talking about zoning. Zoning is a very important topic. We're trying to stay on top of it. I am just so impressed with staff here, the Director of Community Development, our city manager. Everyone's trying to make sure that we're following all the rules. We're going through our processes, making sure that when notification is made, that a statement is provided, so the average reader knows what it's about. It's very hard to understand. Well, what is that public hearing discussing? What's the, what's the effect of that specific ordinance, or what they're just, so it's going to be more helpful to the public. Finally, we're also making sure that in our agendas for the Planning Commission, it provides all of their options that are available per statute. Just some helpful guardrails for them. That's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you. On the comprehensive plan, once the Planning Commission approves that, would you please send that out to all the members of the city council before it's ever scheduled for a workshop, because we may not be enough time to review it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel. First tonight, I'd like to share some information about a live-wire situation that was discussed a few, a month ago, and reported in the breeze last week. The gentleman reported a live-wire near a road project of ours. I think everyone in this room was surprised, because it sounded like a contractor or somebody, not Evergy, disconnected the streetlight and left the power line on the ground. Since then, of course, I contacted Evergy, and we met their representative onsite to discuss what we were all thinking that night. How could this possibly happen? While we were onsite with Evergy, we met with the property owner and discussed more details. The streetlight was actually removed by, what is part of the project was removed by Evergy, and the line was properly secured at that time. While we've been blessed with rains this year, it also brings wind and storms that come with it. The homeowner explained to us, while we were out onsite, that the tree limb broke in one of those storms, hitting the line that was in question, and bring it to the ground. The homeowner did what he is supposed to do, and reported the issue to Evergy. It seems the complaint was primarily about Evergy's response time to this issue. The Evergy representative explained to both me and the homeowner that major storms can significantly increase the demand on their crews. While they typically respond within a few hours, this particular case and particular storm, if you remember, we were having that kind of stuff go on, the crews were delayed, and were very busy. Goal is, you know, it goes without saying, the line was secured and out of reach, but I think that was the miscommunication we had, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. But it also provides a good reminder, if you ever see a line broken or have an outage, please use the Evergy hotline. They'll get right on it. And then, you know, any life-threatening situation in our city, call 911 if it comes to that. So just a quick reminder on that. The other situation or other thing I want to kind of report on, and we can have a discussion later on, is the Eagle Lake volleyball court project. As you know, we upgraded the playground and put new safety surface in. For a variety of reasons, drainage and sand getting into our new safety surface, we had to remove the volleyball court. Prior to putting out a survey or making this decision, Marty, Brian, and I met at Eagle Lake Park and scout possible locations to relocate it. I remember I even stopped a passerby to ask them about it. The two areas, basically east and west, and north and south, seem to be viable options, as we discussed, and we put a little bit of a survey together. 118 residents, or we think residents, responded. 64 in favor of option B, 54 in option A. Last Wednesday, or two Wednesdays ago, I asked Marty to, you know, just go lay it out, see what it looked like. Of course, that caught the attention of our neighbors of Eagle Lake Park. They weren't exactly thrilled about having this in their backyard. They cited reasons for noise, parking, negative impact, both their values of their home and quality of life. They also mentioned, kind of in the conversation, that there's a pretty good drainage way that goes straight to that north-south location. So I appreciate Marty doing this, but we laid out the white line is kind of the standard-sized volleyball court, and then today, he laid out a blue line. It's kind of hard to see. I hope you saw it. And that's more of a high school style. Six people can play on that court. I haven't really decided what direction we're going to go, and I think I need some input from the council if we want to. Maybe I, there was discussions of looking at the Rec Center, looking at other places. I just don't want, I want to be a good neighbor, but I also want to provide the community service with a volleyball court. So something we can discuss later. I don't know if the manager's report's the time to do it, but I just wanted to report on the, what's going on with that relocation project. I'll end with, we received the portable pump last week, and we found a spot in our garage for it. So I know we had a little bit of discussion about that, but as you can see, there's a lot of equipment in there. Lastly, the Chamber Commerce meets next Wednesday for their lunch, and then Hot Dogs Pool Party is August 11th. And look for the flyer for that, because they have two groups. Small dogs start around 6:00, big dogs start around 7:00, but that's always a big community event that everybody likes. So I think I've talked enough, Mayor, but I'll answer any questions if we need to.
So just to clarify, the chamber luncheon is tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Yeah, you said next Wednesday, but it's tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
Which is, is the next Wednesday, but just want to be sure.
You know what?
So what, they moved out of the building to put the pump in?
I think Marty's just eating lunch outside now, so.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. The first item on the agenda is related to special assessments. So several infrastructure, and we do this every year, I think, now. Getting kind of into that cadence. So several infrastructure projects related to new developments are complete, ready for permanent financing, and ready to be special assessed to the benefiting properties. The actions on the agenda will start the formal adoption process that will take place over the next few months. As required, notices will be mailed to property owners of record. A public hearing will be scheduled, and notice of public hearing will be published. And Mr. Kevin Cowan from Gilmore and Ballis here to hear and answer discussions and questions. So, Mr. Cowan?
Good evening. You're right. This is something you do nearly every year, and it's that time of year. A lot of projects, as there have been the last couple of years, if you've looked in your packet, it's Chapel Landing addition, Phase 2, Skyview at Block 49, Phase 2, Bristol Hollows, Phase 2, Chapel Landing, and Homestead, a couple of sewer improvements, and then Cedar Pass, Phase 1. Lots of lots and lots of assessments. A couple of things to draw your attention to. These are all 100% assessed projects to benefiting properties, except the pump station at Chapel Landing and Homestead, and that is 53% assessed and 47% will be a city-at-large component. And then a number of the lots have been the subject of lot splits, and an And I know the city has approved a policy as to how to handle that. And so we got to apply that policy quite a bit in this case where we have a number of lots that are subject to a per lot assessment, and those have been split into separate tax parcels, not separate lots, but separate tax parcels. And so if you notice, there might be a lot to A, lot to B listed in the assessment rule, and the assessments are exactly the same, that's an assessment that's been split 50/50. And then in a couple of instances, we've had replats and our original petitions and resolutions actually address that, that if there's a replat before assessments are imposed, that we're going to assess in the same manner as was set forth in the original document. So for example, if there was a replat of 30 lots, and that turned into 29 lots, if the original resolution said we're going to assess 1/30th to each of the 30 lots, we'll now assess 1/29th to each of the 29. One other adjustment that was made in is that Skyview, I know there are three lots, or is it Cedar Pass? The city owns three lots now that's going to become a public park. That was a replat, so both the denominator changed because of the replat. But then when the city took ownership of the three lots, those lots don't benefit from the public infrastructure in the way the other lots do. So we remove those from the denominator. So if that comes up now, between now and the hearing or at the hearing, that's the analysis. You replatted, it changed the denominator. Now there are three city-owned lots that were part of that. We're installing a park for youth. Those are not going to be assessed, and so that changed the fraction a little bit as well. Last thing I'll mention, this leads to a public hearing, as was referenced. That will be held at the next regular meeting in two weeks. Then there'll be a prepayment period during which property owners can prepay assessments. If they prepay, those will not be subject to and part of the bond issue, so no interest. And they'll reduce the size of the bond issue because that's essentially equity we have coming in. Once we have that information, the final bond sizing will be known. Notice of a bond sale will be given, and September 16th is the schedule we have for the bond sale. And then close in October and pay off temporary notes. So I get it's a lot of information. In terms of the formal action, it's not a resolution. It's just one motion that covers all the things we've discussed, which is approving the statement of final cost, as was referenced earlier. The projects are done, we know the final cost now, and it's time to calculate assessments based on that. So approve the statement of final cost, approve a proposed assessment rule, call for a hearing, and authorize the giving of notice of that hearing are the things we're doing tonight by a single motion.
All right, thank you. Just a question for Ms. Rock. When they make this motion, do they need to read all five of these items? Or can they refer to all five of the items in the motion? Be a lot of reading.
I'm looking at Kevin Cowan. I'm sure you have a preference on this.
I, I think it's, if you all are looking at the five items, and there's the meeting of the minds, I move that we approve and do all of these things. And it's in the minutes. I mean, that's how I draft the minute, so it's all right there. I think that's fine.
I've seen that done before, but I wanted to defer to Kevin.
I just wanted to relieve whoever's going to make this motion of having to read that.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Nobody's going to want to make that motion.
I mean, if you wanted to add more detail, you could move to approve the five items listed, you know, in our agenda packets or something like that, so it ties to something.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Are there any questions for Mr. Cowan?
No.
Like I said, we go through this every year. It's just a different set of properties, and I imagine there'll be several years we'll have to continue to do this, right?
Based on your outstanding two prior notes, I would say yes. I'll be back here next year talking about, same thing, different.
Probably sooner.
Yeah, okay, very good. If there are no questions for him, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or Mr. David.
I'll move that we approve the five items listed in the agenda packet.
I'll second.
That motion by Mr. David is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. Move on to item B. Contract with Central Equipment for new maintenance shop items. As construction of the new public works facility progresses, it's time to order more equipment. And requested purchases on the agenda have been solicited and reviewed by our ownership representative, project architect, and staff. These purchases include industrial fans, vehicle lifts, an air compressor, wash bay equipment, and our city manager is here to discuss and answer questions. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. My two counterparts couldn't make it tonight, so I guess it's up to me. We do have Marty here, which we took a tour of Derby and our school districts, public works facilities. So we've in a way seen this, all this equipment are about ready to purchase work, and Marty likes it. And that's kind of the stamp of approval for us is, are we going to use this equipment? This is the last of kind of standalone pieces of equipment we're going to purchase, or that'll come before you, as the mayor said. Air compressor, industrial fans, a wash bay equipment. This is going to be a huge deal for our public works and mainly our main assets that we have, keeping them clean and keeping them out of the way and keeping from dirt going all over the place. So I think it's been laid out pretty well in your packet. I'm here to answer any questions. Marty's here, also Joey LaFleur is here from Central Equipment. If we have any really specific questions we want to answer. I'll make one note on my staff report. If we accept the bids for all this equipment, the total for the estimate, we estimated about $500,000. It'd be, for all the equipment we purchased would be $491,041.91. So we're under budget on our equipment for this project.
So I was reading through some of the information that you'd provided, and there's a warranty for two years, but there's extended warranty that can be purchased for six years, I think, if I read it right. Did we look into that and what's, what's, what's the aspect of that?
I'm sorry. You can come up here because they'll want to hear it.
Hi, I'm Joey LaFleur, Central Equipment. And so in the, in the bid process, we included the six-year warranty.
This on the air compressor, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's two years on the pump, I'm sorry, two years on the total compressor and four years on the pump. And it also includes maintenance, which is filters and oil for six years.
Okay. And that's extended or that's, that's the basic term?
That's, that's extended warranty on it, and that's included in the price as well.
Well, it is included in the price.
Yes.
Okay, so we are getting the extended.
We just include that in the price. That way, it's because we recommend it for everybody, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate that information because I didn't know that, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions about any of these, this equipment for the public works facility?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Ted, I assume that we can't transfer anything from the old, like, like air compressors?
There's really nothing over there to transfer. We have a standalone air tank about five foot tall. It's a, doesn't really do what it needs to do. We can blow up a tire every once in a while, but that's about it. So anything else that we have over there, it's not going to get transferred because there's nothing really transferred.
So we intend to operate both facilities, at least for a while, right? That's intention.
Yeah, well, there'll be a little bit of a transition period, but that's where I, I'd like to get settled in our new home, and then we can start, as we get settled in, we can start discussions on what we want to do with our existing facility.
So you probably need an air compressor at both places, is what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea, but it's.
Any other questions or concerns? Discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
A motion to approve the contract with Central Equipment in amount not just to exceed $218,377.82 and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. If there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Items C and D are related items, so we'll just talk, do them together. So on July 15th, 2025, the governing body approved a contract with Ultra Fiberglass Systems to supply customized catwalks at the new public works facility. And after the contract was approved, Ultra Fiberglass Systems told city staff that they omitted the freight fee in the amount of $2,250 from the initial quote. The contractor then submitted a new contract, which includes freight, the freight fee. Under council law, the governing body has the authority to rescind prior actions, including agreements, and when such actions are deemed appropriate. In the public interest, the resolution before the council would rescind the prior contract. After approval of the resolution, the council would then consider a new contract, and Maria is available to answer questions. So item C is to rescind the previous decision we made on July 15th, and IMD is approve a new contract.
Why don't we, why don't we just amend the existing contract or create a new contract for the 2250 instead of going through this?
I have the same question.
With this specific contract and the way it's presented, it was an essential term, and we don't have a specific provision that talks about how we're going to handle that. The governing body absolutely can vote no, that you don't want to make any change, that you want to keep it as was presented by all the parties back on July 15th. But in this specific case, it would be starting over. There's been no money paid, there's been no exchange of property. So the cleanest way to handle this for this specific scenario would be to rescind from July 15th and then have the new contract with the new freight fee. The first time around, the freight says not included. That is why we proceeded as we did. But now there is a brand new quote that includes that fee.
Okay, so if it said not included, why aren't we doing a separate item just for the freight? Back to my original question. I don't see why we need to amend the original contract.
It's considered an essential term with the way that the document was provided, that it was included. And with it being an essential term, it is best at this point to start over, rescind the contract from July 15th, and then have a new contract. If this had been something, perhaps maybe they needed more time, maybe another week or two weeks for delivery. And if there was no objection by staff, then that could be an amendment as to there's no objection, the city agrees to allow two more weeks of lead time. But this is coming down to their specific price, and that is why we are doing it this way. The other thing to take into account is, in this specific item, I think there was even a different date, right? The quotation was updated with a different date as well.
Okay. I still don't see the point, but I guess if we have to, we have to.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hamburg.
I make a motion to approve a resolution rescinding council's prior motion on July 15th, 2025, approving a contract with Ultra Fiberglass Systems for customized catwalks based upon Ultra's admission of a $22,250 freight fee and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Hamburg and a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Now, item D is the, is to approve the contract with, that includes the freight.
How much did the date change?
I think we received it last week. Do you remember, Ted, when they sent it to us?
I think the question has to do with the delivery date. How much did the delivery date change?
I don't believe the delivery date changed.
I didn't see it change. It was one of those conversations where I'm pretty sure it'll get approved, the freight wise. So I haven't heard a massive delay into it. My project manager would have told me by now, so we'll assume same date.
Okay, I misunderstood the previous comment then, that the date changed, just why the contract needed to be.
She was saying the, the date of the purchase order, just the, the date that put, they put on the top of the document.
Date of their quote.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve the contract with Ultra Fiberglass Systems for customized catwalks in amount not to exceed $35,908 and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. So item E, considering contract with UMC for replacement gate valves in the South Water Tower. So the South Water Tower has four valves to isolate the tower's water supply in the event of an emergency or for routine maintenance. Recently, while performing routine maintenance, staff discovered that three of the valves failed. Staff reached out to two local companies, McCullough and Utility Maintenance Contractors, UMC, to provide quotes for replacing valves. Assistant Public Works Director, John Stamen, is available to answer questions. Mr. Stamen, am I saying your name correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Why aren't we doing the fourth valve too if they're all in that bad a shape?
The fourth valve was actually installed in 2006. It's a much newer valve, the original three are from 1983. The fourth valve appears to be working correctly. We haven't noticed any problems with it. Our predecessors were aware that one of the valves had failed prior to us stepping into this position, and we discovered the second valve failure while attempting to shut off the South Tower for routine maintenance. The third valve, the South valve, actually snapped during that maintenance, so.
Okay, but the, but the fourth valve is still 20 years old now, so should we be doing it soon or now while we're in there working?
We, we felt that because of it, it being only 20 years old, it should have more life left on it. We'll certainly look at it while we're there. It'll be dug up, and we'll make a judgment if we need to maybe repair parts. It's a butterfly valve as opposed to the other three, which are gate valves. So it's a little different. I have faith that it's still in good working order.
Okay.
Do you know who made the butterfly valve, by chance?
I'm not aware of who the manufacturer was.
I didn't think you necessarily would, but.
If you had to replace it, would it be another butterfly or a gate?
My preference would be a gate, but if we need to replace with another butterfly valve, we could.
So will there be no use of that tower during that time, I guess?
Correct. We'll have to drain it completely to allow us the ability to actually change the valves. One of the valves is actually to the tower itself. The north valve goes to the neighborhoods north of the tower, and the south valve goes to the main along 45th Street.
Okay, so those are isolation valves or directing, directional valves. So there's another valve in line with the one that's bad in order to stop it? I mean, because I don't know, why'd you have pressure coming from the system?
Yes, we'll have a valve further north in the neighborhood that we can shut down and a valve further down 45th Street. Unfortunately, that does mean that two homes will be isolated during the time of repair. They will not have water for the duration of the repair.
And what is that estimated to be?
We're hoping in, in one day.
One day, 24 hours?
That's our hope.
Okay.
They don't find any more problem.
So I assume they're going to be well, they're going to be well.
Well away, yeah, made aware.
Yes, we will inform them within 28 hours of work start.
And there's no, no risks far as pressure or anything? Will that be a problem without the tower having water?
No.
I guess because it's summer.
Yeah.
So there's more usage? I just wondered if we're going to have a pressure issue because of this?
It shouldn't be an issue. I'll set the north tower to a higher level than we currently have it at.
So you have a little bit more reserve? So you have a little bit more reserve?
Right, so it should hold us due, and then we have all of the pumps working, which should be able to keep up with any demand during that timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
All motion to approve a contract with UMC for replacement of three 12-inch gate valves in the amount of $36,750 and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item is a consideration to withdraw from the community rating system program. So the community rating system is a voluntary incentive program that encourages community flood plan management practices that exceed the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. In May of 2014, Bel Air was approved as the CRS community, and in order to retain the CRS rating, the system must submit an annual report. Every year, multiple city departments devote many work hours to gather the information for the annual report. And recently, staff have reevaluated the program. They found that monetary value of the staff hours involved in the maintain the program exceeds the actual dollar value of the benefits. Staff also looked at participation in CRS by nearby communities and found that four Cedric County communities have also withdrawn from this program in recent years. The Director of Community Development, Paula Downs, is here to discuss and answer questions. I just want to say, this is a, a good thing to do when you find that you're just spending extra staff hours to maintain a program that gives almost no benefit, actually less benefit than the, the cost of the, of the program. This is the right thing to do, to stop doing these things, because it doesn't make any, any financial sense, and so I commend the staff for, for putting this together and making this proposal. So Ms. Downs, it's your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little bit of background, I know that you have the staff report in front of you. It is a voluntary program. The city's been involved in it since 2013. There was a very great presentation at the state level about why communities should be involved, and interestingly enough, out of all the states where it was promoted, Kansas was the one to respond in the greatest numbers. So we have 46 communities across the state that participate in this voluntary program, and some of it's based on the actual need or the level or the coverage of the flood plane in a community. So those that have a larger flood plane coverage in their community have more homes probably in the area that would require that. So we were doing our neighborly thing and our community responsibility thing for years, and we happened to receive a new regional specialist, and she called to talk to me and answer questions, and she says, Paula, can you tell me why Bel Air is participating in this program? And I said, well, what do you mean? We're protecting the water and the flood plane. She goes, but you only have three citizens in the community availing themselves of that, and on average, they're saving approximately $200 to $300 a year by availing themselves of our 5% discount that we do for, for obviously creating all this work on a yearly basis. So we've been, it's a voluntary process. It was approved in 2014. We are now a, we started as a class eight community. Class eight community meant that our citizens received a 10% discount. We have moved downward in, around COVID time, and with some staff responsibilities to a class nine, which receives 5% discount. I also put in there that you can see there's four other communities in Cedric County that are participating in the community rating program, and they range from 5%, 10% to 15% discount. Some of them clearly have larger flood plain areas where there's homes and businesses, and so it might be well worth it for them to continue to produce those discounts for their citizens. And so right now, we participate not only in a yearly or annual cycle reporting where we gather in the information that I've put out in this list, but we also then prepare for a five-year audit cycle, which is really intensive, where they come onsite, they visit, they review all of our past years. And so when she acknowledged that we had three participants, I started thinking about how do we minimize the impact on the staff for the benefit that is served by the community? So what you have before you is the limited number of citizens participating. The average savings for the three participants is anywhere from $600 to $900 a year. The good thing about this is that we don't know who these citizens are, but FEMA does. FEMA will make the notification to them. They will be covered through October of 2026, so they have some time to plan or prepare for the increase or the slight increase in their flood zone, flood plane insurance premiums. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions related to what we do, how we do it, or any other things that you might need clarification on.
A couple of comments, and then I, I do have a question, but, but one of the things, if you notice, is the cities that are participating. Valley Center is named Valley Center because that's the center of the valley, and all the water runs towards Valley Center, okay? We in Bel Air happen to be the highest point in Cedric County, so water doesn't run to us, it runs away from us. Hayesville and Derby, the watershed of the whole area goes south, so they are likely to get all the water from all of us, in, in storm, stormwater we're talking about, and that's why they, they would, makes sense for them to stay in this program, because they probably have a lot more properties that are more susceptible to flooding. We have very minimal, as is determined by this. And I did ask for the staff to look through all the activities that they say they do that comply with this, and say, which of those activities are we gonna have to continue doing regardless of this program? And I do know there's some, so could you just tell us what that, the summary of that?
The list is long, thank you for asking that question. The list is very long, however, some of that information will continue to come in because of different reasons, right? We'll receive flood plane certificates as needed. A lot of what is listed on there is also utilized for another program, and Ann might want to talk a little bit about that, but our MS4 permit through KDHE. So there's some things that they initiate and they are doing because they need to keep track of that for our permit, and we were sharing some of that information. There was some information that we were just creating, so what you see on our list is mostly, it might come in here, it might come in there, we'll still collect it, but then we have to make sure that we're gathering it all together and putting it together as it comes in. So for instance, I'll, I'll just give you a couple of examples. I can assure you, general answer to the question, Mayor, is we are not gonna stop doing something that is necessary to us, for us to deliver services and meet the requirements of any program that we're required to report to. But things like, we were developing three utility bill inserts, so we were designing it, we were sending it out on basic, on different kinds of topics. Well, we wouldn't normally do that as a matter of requirement. We may do it as a matter of preference, but we wouldn't do it every single time in that fashion. Or we were sending out information letters. We wouldn't do that as a normal practice except for this program, because it's not required. But we will get flood insurance, our flood certificates, we will get some of those other kinds of things as a matter of doing regular business. So it's not that we're not gonna collect the data, we will receive it, we just won't be collecting it quarterly, monthly, biannually, however that works out, to be able to report it in a way. So the services aren't gonna stop, the data is not gonna be collected for other programs as required, and we will continue to offer the good service that we need. So we just won't be collecting and reporting it on annual and, and a five-year cycle to the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I do have one question, I guess one comment first. So you mentioned the five-year cycle audit, so obviously that eliminates that requirement altogether, which is, I'm sure, a big, a big time saver, as you mentioned. My question is, homeowners insurance in general is just a hot topic right now, because costs are going up and those are going up. Just clarify to everybody, this has zero impact to their normal homeowners insurance, it's only specifically to those that have flood insurance.
Absolutely correct.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Flood insurance is an option unless you have a mortgage, and the mortgage companies tend to say, you gotta have it. Okay, very good. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Yeah, I appreciate you finding us. There are only three residents, we don't know who they are, but I would have never heard about this, so I appreciate you looking for efficiencies. I'm gonna make a motion to approve a resolution to withdraw from the CRS community program as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Welch. Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. On to item G, under Kansas statute, sidewalk repairs are the responsibility of the owner of the abiding property. So in 2021, the city council recognized that there is a benefit to all citizens for sidewalks to be in good condition, and therefore adopted a policy aimed at assisting homeowners with the cost of repairs. Each year since then, city council has approved a new grant program for the fiscal year, and Director of Community Development, Paula Downs, is here to discuss that program and answer questions. So included in the packet are a series of options to consider. If we take the time to consider all of these options, we will spend an hour or more on this $15,000 program. So that is making a major complication for what we should be, a simple program. From the report, it is clear staff has not been operating this program as directed by this council. So the direction was to inspect sidewalks and send notices where sidewalks need to be repaired, advising homeowners of their responsibility. The city is only to advise these homeowners there is a sidewalk replacement grant program. No forms are to be automatically distributed. Advocations are only provided where, when specifically requested by a homeowner. And I encourage city council to adopt such a motion instead of the multiple options provided in the packet report. So certainly welcome to discuss this as much as you want, I just don't want to spend an hour talking about a $15,000 program, okay?
We tried this because we wanted to help out the homeowners, but it sounds to me, from what I read, that no homeowners are doing this on their own, they're being prompted to do it, and if that's the case, after four years, I think we should get rid of the program.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll disagree with that. I mean, I think the goal of the program, I like the fact that the council, I was not on council at the time that this was set up, but, you know, the purpose of the program is to help repair sidewalks, so that the entire community has the ability to, you know, hopefully use sidewalks that are in good condition and good order. I think that the program, just looking at just the, the numbers that are presented, no matter which way it happened, there's been some progress there, and I think it'd be good to consider, as we grow, how do we, how do we encourage citizens to continue using the program? How do we grow the program? And what I mean by that is, I would suggest if we continue, if we decide to continue the program, that we make it a 50/50 type proposition instead of 100%, and, and kind of encourage all citizens that are the responsible party to participate in the actual cost. And so that would kind of be my general feeling on it, is to, and, and I'd be even in, in, looking at the stats, it's been utilized, we've spent that, you know, those funds, I would be in supportive if we were going to consider a 50% participation to increase maybe the, the total budget slightly, not a lot, but slightly, and see if we can get more sidewalk repair done. Certainly, I appreciate Mayor, Mayor's comments of how the actual program has been utilized, and that is a consideration to consider, how do we modify it? But I think the program, in my mind, has been utilized, maybe not exactly the way it was intended, but to me, the goal is to make sidewalk repairs, and that's happened, and our community is safer because of that, so that's kind of my feelings on it.
I just want to give a little bit of history there, because I was one who was instrumental in pushing this program and getting it started, and the reason I did it, here's the thing, if you own a property that has a sidewalk by it, you're responsible for maintenance of that sidewalk. If it breaks or cracks or something, you've got to fix it. I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house, but my neighborhood has lots of sidewalks, and I get benefit of those sidewalks, and I have to pay zero to maintain them, okay? That doesn't seem wholly fair, okay? So I thought, oh, how to, how can we do this? And I worked with our city attorney at the time, and this was what, what she had come up with, and, and that's why I think this, this is a good program. I think if we can get clear direction on how this is to be managed, it can be very effective and very useful, but that is, that's the history of it, is why we have such a program. So anyway, but I'll let everybody have their say if they'd like.
I was on council when we decided to do this, and I pushed for this program myself. So my wanting to get rid of it is because I'm not seeing the program work right. One of the big problems is who's liable for injuries if the sidewalk isn't fixed? And that's part of my problem with this now, is we're bunting this all together up in one ear, and if the sidewalk is bad enough it needs repaired, why are we waiting months to repair it? It's first problem. So, and, so we can't go, I, we don't want to go to a program where the city is responsible for finding the sidewalk problems and paying for the sidewalk problems, because that throws all the liability on the city. The city does not want that liability that has been assigned by state law to the homeowners. And we can override that, but I don't think that's something we want to do. I don't think we want to take on that liability. We don't want to take on the liability of having to audit the sidewalks every year so we can see if something's moved. And I'm, I'm not opposed to paying 100% of people self-report up to the limit of what we've budgeted. I'm not opposed to paying half of it if people self-report, but if they're not self-reporting, I don't think we should be paying anything.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a quick question for Paula. So I did ask of case numbers kind of prior to this program, and then since, like, just total number of cases per year. I mean, is, what you're saying, John, somewhat makes sense to me, but I still think there's a code violation if there's a sidewalk that's not meeting our current code, whether they're self-reporting or not, there's a code violation, and I appreciate your comment about liability. I certainly don't think the city needs to take on any additional liability, but I also want to see our community fix the things that need to be fixed. Whether they're reported violation or not, it'd be nice that they're just fixed. So I don't know if you have the data on like the case numbers over the years and how those have changed, or how we've, I know there's a history to how that maybe has changed, how we've managed with the program, but do you have any insight into that at all?
What I know to this point is how we've been operating the program and, and the understanding of staff, by staff, that this program was really designed because people weren't self-reporting. These can be costly, depending on how many panels of broken sidewalk they have in front of their home. So if you don't have the money and you don't want to fix it, you're not gonna report, and I don't know that we've had very many code enforcement neighbors complaining, unless, of course, they've had an incident that maybe created a trip hazard or something happened. And I would have to go back and look at the code enforcement cases over the last few years to see how many of those sidewalk cases we have. I'm happy to provide that information back to you. And I think part of what we have been doing with this program is advertising it, which we should be, we should be notifying people, it should be on our website, but sometimes I think the response has not been as high as we'd hoped, and so we did get into a pattern of providing encouragement to apply and avail themselves of the grant funds. And some of the funds, also, just for clarification, the, the stats that I put in there, the data that I put in there, some of those sidewalks were also part of city projects that tied, may have tied into that, because part of the program also says that the city is gonna take care of any ADA ramps or tie-ins like that if the sidewalk panel is being replaced. So I just think that it's been a policy overview, and we wanted to make sure that you, we, we delivered the program that you intended it to be, and that we do it in the way in which we reduce liability to the city, because when we go out and do an audit on a sidewalk and we start marking sidewalks, there's, there's acknowledgement that city is aware that it's broken, but I'm not gonna apply for the application and it doesn't get fixed, or the other thing that might happen is we have more sidewalks that get requested to be replaced, and the funds then are capped, and then we tell them in the program, we'll carry these over till the next year, and I worry a little bit about what happens in that year if somebody gets hurt and we've marked it and those kinds of things. So we were just trying to get some feedback and some, just some feedback on how you wanted to move this forward, and that we will establish an appropriate process that limits this city's liability.
So a couple of comments along those lines. One is, just because we have a budget item doesn't mean we've got to spend the budget, okay? I think we need to make sure that we don't run that, run into that, because I know in a lot of government areas, that is the philosophy, you gotta spend the budget or we don't get it next year. Well, it's okay if you don't get it next year, because that means we're being more efficient, and maybe we can use those funds for other things that, that are. and maybe we can use those funds for other things that that are more that that need to be expended. The other is that there's actually two aspects here. One is the reporting and code enforcement, okay? So the typical way, and correct me if I misunderstand this, is that we don't necessarily know about a problem sidewalk unless somebody tells us that there's a problem, okay? So when that, when we become aware of it, we go out and check it and then we say, okay, that's, yes, this is a problem. And then we tell the homeowner, this is a problem you need to fix it. And they are given a certain amount of time to fix the sidewalk. Is that, is that true statement?
That's very accurate.
That is very separate from this program in that that is their homeowner's responsibility to go fix the sidewalk. This program is to say, if you in that situation, you can't afford to fix it, we will help you with it, okay? And you can make applications for that help, but that's not an automatic. It's a, this is, this is an option. If the funds are available and 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 it's and you meet requirements. So I think that that needs to be clearly understood in everybody's mind that that's the way we operate this program. We don't go out and advertise and try to call people in and say, oh, please apply for this program because that is not what it's about. Some people would rather just fix their own, and that's fine. I'm I'm perfectly happy with them doing that. I don't think we should feel that we have to go fix their sidewalk for them. It's their responsibility. It's not the city's. And and I do know, and I don't know the details about this case, but I do know the city did get sued here a few years ago because of a of a problem sidewalk. But again, it was, it was really the homeowner's responsibility, it's the city's. And I think that was our legal position in that lawsuit. That is the statutory requirement and that is where we stand. So I don't remember how that was, how that resolved, and it doesn't, it's kind of academic to this this matter here. But we just need to be aware of that, that we make sure that we are doing the right things here per state law so that we don't trip ourselves up and say, and somebody can say, well, the city was responsible for that.
Mayor, I did have a couple of clarifications after you just spoke, so just one second. So first, to your comment about not spending to the budget, there's also evidence that there's been years where we decided to spend over the budget slightly, like, right? So that can also happen, right? An application comes in, there's a valid concern, it's $1,000 over our budget. Our city manager can make the decision to approve that application. I think that's perfectly fine as well. And then the second thing, Paula or our attorney, can you clarify? What we're talking about here is private property that has a public right-of-way sidewalk through it or attached to it. Because in some cases, like my house, there's a strip of grass between the curb and my property, and there's a sidewalk. And then in some properties that have been built, there are sidewalks immediately next to the road and the curb. That's a public right-of-way as well. Just to clarify, Woodlawn might be an example, right? We have a public street with publicly owned city property on a public path and a public sidewalk. Where is the line drawn there, Maria? Say our path has an issue along Woodlawn or a sidewalk along Woodlawn on our area. Let's public property owned by the city. The city is responsible for those. I just want to kind of vet out some of the differences between private property and public property. Do you have a clarification there? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I would rather our city be progressive in thought of safety and reporting because this is a complaint-based thing, and you pointed it out. This doesn't happen, these things don't get fixed if you just keep walking over the bad sidewalk piece. It does have to get reported so that it does get recognized. And then the responsible party can take care of it, whether that's the city or whether that's the private property owner or the private private property owner decides to apply for a grant. I still want to see us fixing sidewalks that need to be fixed, whether this grant process stays a part of that or not. That should be a top of our mind, right? I know that's separate from this, but it also is somewhat related. We don't want to not be reporting because we don't want to fix stuff. Like, please report if you ever come across a sidewalk that needs needs fixed. So anyway, I don't know if, Maria, if I gave you enough time to clarify that point.
You're right. We are responsible for the public and the right-of-way. This policy, I'm going back and looking at some of it right now. The policy specifically talks about as far as the grant and the monies for this program is for private, for property owners, for any of the sidewalks that are abutting their property. In fact, our policy even goes further to remind anyone applying just because the city is assisting with this grant money, that does not take away the responsibility of you as the property owner per statute, being responsible for the maintenance and repair. But this is, it appears that that's the only focus of this, is focusing for private property owners. And we, of course, are still responsible for our public right-of-way, our sidewalks. We're not trying to negate any of those responsibilities.
I don't think that addressed Mr. Dean's question because technically the public sidewalks are not on the owner's property, but they abut the owner's property. And so the question then becomes, when is it the city's responsibility to maintain sidewalks? Which sidewalks does the city maintain versus which sidewalks does the adjoining landowner maintain? So down Woodlawn, that big wide walk path, I I know it's, I think it's city property on both sides. I'm not sure if that's technically correct or not, but but that is the city's responsibility. I'm sure it is not the homeowner that lives on Woodlawn to responsibility to take care of those sidewalks.
And the thing that makes it muddier is people don't know whose property it is, right? It's just a matter of the sidewalk's not safe.
I think two things. One is, if you see a problem, please report it. If it's our responsibility, it's the city, we're going to fix it.
Right.
Okay. But I think the dividing issue here is that when it is, when the city actually paid for and did not impose specials on property owners for the sidewalk, the city is going to pay for the repair and maintenance of that sidewalk. But when we do build sidewalks that are then assess special taxes to the homeowners, those sidewalks are the ones that this program is intended to help pay for. And that's what, that's where the dividing is. Is that in specific in the law or in the in the policy? I can't say that, but I think that's the intent here, okay?
And statute gives a definition of sidewalk. It talks about the portion of a street between curb lines or the lateral lines of a roadway and the adjacent property lines intended for use by pedestrians. So it goes into detail as what the sidewalk is, how it abuts a property owner's property, and then who is responsible for it. And we are consistent with that language in the policy as well. As far as Woodlawn, I'm looking at a Google map and I'm confused as which ones we're talking about, but I can definitely get an answer for you.
I wasn't meaning to throw that out there, making it confusing for this program. I just wanted to point out that citizens listening, whether it's in the neighborhood or along Woodlawn, they're not going to know if it's the city or private. We just need, we need to know about it. And then the person that's responsible will will fix it, right? Whether this policy remains or not, that's still a thing. And we still want a great community with safe walking paths and safe sidewalks. So I'm off my soapbox. Just want to make sure that that's stated.
Way, way back here tonight, I want to emphasize that no repair should be carried over to the next year just because there's no money to give the property owner to fix it. If it's needs fixed, it needs fixed now, not in a year from now.
I agree.
And if we don't do that, then the city will end up being liable because we'll say, well, it could have waited.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point. Ms. Hamburg, you had some.
100%.
I was just going to jump in with a couple of my thoughts. I really like the philosophy of it. Some people don't even want a sidewalk in front of their house. They may not want traffic in front of their house. And then other people benefit from it. And I like the idea of us giving something. But I've always liked, because it is technically their responsibility, a little bit of skin in the game and also to kind of regulate so people aren't just trying to get little cracks fixed because there might be money that year. So I I heard 50, I'd be open to maybe 25%. Some skin in the game of some sort from homeowners, I think would be good. This third thing was, one of the things we talked about last year, I think it's Councilmember Smith, talked about the bundling issue. We can't get into that either because then that becomes our issue. And I can't imagine that there's that much efficiency for sidewalk blocks of bundling anyway. So putting this back on to individual homeowners is not a big loss of savings there. And then I would suspect that because staff has gone around and kind of surveyed the area, some of our most egregious issues have already been taken care of. So I think if we keep the program, if homeowners have some skin in the game, just to kind of help regulate applications, I think we should keep the program because I like the philosophy behind it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I think we updated this program too after the first year because we had some homeowners that tried to repair the sidewalks themselves and didn't do it right. I think that's partly why we insisted on our city contractor doing it, or at least a city-approved contractor.
That's a dangerous way to take it, yeah, but okay.
Well, the program, the policy program does set out all the specifications that they have to build to, and it does get inspected. So it has to be so deep, it has to be certain kind of concrete, those kinds of things.
Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Couple of things. First, I think that we're being a little bit a little bit overreach, government overreach, to assume that every homeowner knows the specifications for a valid and okay sidewalk. Is it one-eighth of an inch or a quarter inch or three-quarters of an inch or one inch? Or is it a quarter inch crack or a half inch crack? Or is it a slight difference? Is it a little bit of slope? And I mean, for us to say, oh, boy, they should have told us. So I'm definitely for 100% coverage by the city through the grants. That's fine because everybody's using them, probably not the person that owns the home, maybe most of the time. Especially if they don't have kids, they're probably never using the sidewalk, but they got all the traffic. The other thing is, if I remember right, on my lot, the sidewalk that goes through my driveway is on city property. My lot doesn't start until after the sidewalk. And that's where, that's my property. But the sidewalk itself and close to the road, that's all been given to the city. So I don't know how we say that's okay for the city's property, which has a sidewalk on it, to be the responsibility. I know you can write a statute that says, even though it's on city property, you have to take care of it. I'm interesting, interested why that hasn't been challenged in court. But for me, I just think we need to support it. We need to have more sidewalks, not less sidewalks. People are going to not want a sidewalk, especially if we're going to be kind of over the top here saying, oh, boy, you got to do it and we're going to charge you. And if you don't take care of it, we'll take care of it for you and charge you because I know some of the homes that are older, those are the ones that are probably going to have a lot more deltas in the sidewalk. So I mean, we try to, we should try to help the citizens as much as we can with this kind of stuff because otherwise I just think we're being big government and not really helping the little guy that's trying to just live in a house, have a sidewalk, have people get through. And if there's an issue, let them know. And if they see something, they can tell us. But I just, yeah, we can always say they're skin in the game for them, but for them, that might be a problem, especially if they have a lot of sidewalk and they have a long lot. If you're on a corner lot, you've got a real problem. You got that whole darn thing to take care of. So just say, I don't want any sidewalks on my property. And I don't think that's, you know, goes well with a city that wants to get together, have people be able to walk and stay off the dang street so they don't get hit by the cars. Anyway, that's my two cents.
So I think just to, just so you know, and I'll let the attorney here and we'll make, let's ask the attorney to clarify this. I think the state statute says that sidewalk in front of your house is your responsibility, even though it is not in your, on your property.
It also tells you to mow the grass and trim the trees.
Yes.
It's not just a sidewalk.
Yeah, so. Please, please help us confirm. Is that correct?
That's true.
Okay, how about the attorney?
That that information is shared in our policy. That information, that statutory information is also shared regularly in other cities and their sidewalk programs to to educate and make sure that no city is trying to take on that statutory responsibility just by trying to be helpful with the cost share program.
Okay, so we're 30 minutes into this discussion and I was hoping we could cut it short, but we couldn't. I'm not trying to wrap it up necessarily, but it sounds like there's some consistency that we should continue this program, but there's also some discussion about maybe we should should tweak this. Do we want to table this with some direction to the to staff as how to tweak it? Or do we want to approve it as proposed? I mean, it's up to the council to make that decision.
We've already got the ordinance. I don't know that we need to change the ordinance. I think we just need to change how it's being implemented.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of why we wanted to have this discussion with council with retirements. Keith retired last year. This is Paula's first go-around on this particular program. And Keith kind of handled a lot of it for me last year. So I think with the discussion we had tonight, Paula, are you pretty clear if they choose to go forward? She said, she said yes.
I think I'm worried about the cost share piece that you guys are discussing that might be a helpful. I think I understand that no bundling and no hiring our own contract, don't carry over applications and some of those things. But I think you've had a little bit of discussion about the cost share or paying 100% if that, if you could provide direction, that would be helpful.
Ms. Hamburg, did you want to add something there about that?
Yeah, I I think 25% sounds good. What what is the average cost per block? Is it a few hundred? What what is the cost? Just so we have a feel.
$150 maybe.
Okay.
It's, I think last year the quote per panel, but it depends on the size of the panel. So it's hard to quantify it a little bit.
But if you're going to do a percentage, then we have to change the ordinance. Right now, it's first come, first served.
Mr. Mayor. That's maybe the things that we need to give them direction so the staff knows how to fix.
Mr. Mayor.
If we're adding to the list, I'm all in for 100%. I'd like you to try to estimate, just from what I see from the past years, it doesn't look like it's growing rapidly. You know, that even if we spent 100% on 20,000 instead of 15, I think Mayor was right the first time we've overtalked this. But as long as you can solve the liability issue, I'm fine with 100%.
Okay, so we have several ideas out there. Do we want, somebody want to make a motion as to which way we want to go here?
Do we actually have a resolution? We don't have a resolution. Well, then I most certainly deny the resolution because I don't know what it is and I don't want to talk about it anymore. I think the one we got is fine.
So I have a motion by Mr. Welch to deny it. Do we have a second on that that motion?
So that just leaves it as is, right?
Yes.
I'll second.
And the second by Mr. Schmidt. Now to clarify, to make sure we understand that if you deny this resolution, what is the implication of that? Is the program dead or what?
I think the ordinance, well, Maria, you can speak to the ordinance. My understanding was that we needed the ordinance to approve the program.
The resolution included in the packet updates it to include the 15,000, whatever that amount is for 2025. And then everything stays the same. The only change is you're giving the $15,000 as the amount. And everything, the 100% cost share remains, the.
Okay, but the question is, what's the implication of denying this 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 issue of this motion or this resolution?
By denying this resolution, there could be a new resolution next meeting to get an approval for a fund amount for 2025. But nothing carries today such as a fund amount or the program continues. It would just be, there's no money being approved by council.
Okay, well.
There's a program without a funding. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure everybody knows what we've got. I'm sorry?
But we could approve funding at a future date. If we choose.
Mr. Mayor, I I feel like if we stay as is, the biggest concern is the liability, not any cost share amount, correct? I mean, if we leave the program as is, don't we still have liability concerns or no?
We have 2024 sidewalk program. It's dead. So if we don't approve a 2025 sidewalk program, there is no sidewalk program.
Right. We're going to, yeah, okay, back to.
Well, we could come back next week, next council meeting with something different.
That's right.
Okay. All right, but this, the motion on the table is to deny the resolution. So if there's any other discussion concerning that motion, and if there is none, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favors of denying the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those opposed?
Aye.
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 I I hear one, the motion is one to four, so it fails.
Right.
I don't understand what it's going to imply. I didn't understand what it was going to imply. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David.
I'm motioning to table the resolution updating the sidewalk installation replacement program and authorize, yeah. I don't know, authorize the mayor to sign.
We're not gonna sign anything.
But that's all right.
Mis-tableing it.
I have a motion by Mr. David to table, and a second by Mr. Dean.
Mr. Dean, yes.
All in favor of tabling the motion, the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries four to one with Mr. Schmidt against. Okay. So that motion does carry four to one, and, I have to make my note here. So that motion carries four to one. Do we have as a, just a follow-on discussion, any specific direction we want to give staff to, to pursue this issue and clarify, other than discussions we've already had? Does staff have any question for the council of clarification? Maybe that's a better way of saying it.
I have no idea what you want in the program. So I would suggest, like, what cost share should we put in the next time we bring it up? Or how would you like us to work on this program to improve it? Or Paula, do you have any? Or, or do you just want it back up as is, have more time to read through? I'm not sure what the table motion.
Yeah, I want to read it, because I didn't read through this whole resolution the way it is.
Mr. Dave.
What I heard, and you can, you can understand whatever you heard, was that everybody's worried about the liability. Staff recommend that we not continue it the way it is. I think that was due to liability. You didn't really expound on why you didn't want to keep it the way it was. But I don't think cost was the huge issue. That's what I heard.
And as far as costs go, have we been spending a hundred percent of the money every year or not?
Pretty close.
Pretty close.
Absolutely.
Well, we may, may want to increase it, but I don't know that we can, because we've already been through the budget.
My suggestion was to maybe slightly increase it and split the costs to help it, help do more.
Yeah, so about three years ago, we moved it to the capital improvement program because we were facing that in between fiscal years. That's why sometimes you'll see a higher amount and a lower amount when you go through the history.
Yep.
So funding can be decided at any time. I mean, we'll write it into it, but.
So I did raise two concerns. I did send this to, in an email to Maria earlier today, that the reimbursement is not a hundred percent of the cost. It's up to a hundred percent. And that wasn't clear in the documents that I was reading. The document seemed to have the subtle underlying assumption that the city will contract for all sidewalk repairs. And while I've done that and made those repairs more cost-effective, it is a mistake to make that assumption. At least the document should not tie us to such an assumption. And it's certainly possible and acceptable for individual homeowners to accept, to separately contract for such repairs. And we should make sure these documents do not tie our hands on this issue. So those are two comments I, I would want to say are things we want to do in revising these documents. Okay. So I hear a couple people that are pretty, pretty, seem to be pretty firm that they want to a hundred percent cost share. I've heard one says that we should have some skin in the game. I don't know if that's the feelings of anyone else, but I'm just trying to get a consensus so we can just give the, the staff direction here on this.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I would agree. I mean, I don't mind taking up to twenty thousand, but a hundred percent coverage, they'd have, you know, they can ask for it. But I just think we want to help them and have them help us to identify places where it looks like it's a real problem. So that's what I would like to go with, kind of like what we have, but bump it up just a little bit. It's not like we're having to run on the bank to get sidewalks fixed.
I think that's true.
It's not a deal breaker in my mind if it's fifty, fifty, or a hundred. I was suggesting if we wanted to try to grow the program and didn't want to increase the funding as much. So I'm one hundred percent okay with one hundred percent. And I tend to agree with you, Tom, on the idea of we just want to, we just want to get them fixed and help people do it.
Okay, Ms. Hamburg?
Yeah, and I'm okay with that. And I guess if, if people, if we were not like triple over request, then that's okay. And if it becomes an issue down the road, we can revisit the, the percentage. And then just to clarify the liability issue, the big deal is, is once the city sees something, that's an issue, right? Because, and that's happened in the past where if you see something and then somebody gets hurt, that's a big problem. So that's what the issue was with the liability and us kind of taking part in any way. So to be clear, we, we're saying here, we're not, we're not going to contact the contractors. We will pay for it after the homeowner takes care of it themselves?
The typical is a reimbursement through the grant program.
Okay.
Once they produce the invoices from a contractor.
Okay, thanks.
I got a question here that's going a little deeper. It says regarding specifications for five-foot sidewalks is what it must comply with. What if your sidewalk's not five-foot? We don't want a bunch of odd-sized blocks out there, do we?
They replace, I'll look at that language. So thank you for pointing that out. Typically, what we do is they're replacing exactly what they have in the ground right now.
That's what I would assume.
With the specifications of.
They're all over the map.
Maybe, maybe Stevens can chime in on that. Do you know if we have any four-foot sidewalks? I know we are, but we have a lot of five-foot, and we're now going to the standard of six-foot, I think. Is that correct?
Yes, we do have a significant amount of four-foot sidewalks in the city.
So, so maybe we need that clarification in there, that we don't want to put a five-foot slab in a four-foot wall.
Six feet either.
The one in my house is only three feet, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, they can move around.
It really should say existing sidewalk size.
Okay. All right. So I think that, hopefully, that gives the staff enough direction.
That helps me a lot better now. So we'll clean it up, put it back on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We do not have a need for an executive session, as I understand, so we'll move on from there.
I'll say it sometime.
Discussion and future issues. City workshop is next Tuesday, August 12th at 7:00 PM. And I assume that will work for everybody. I know we need to finalize our discussion on budget, and I think we're going to talk a little bit about some codes that didn't you ever mentioned.
Well, no, we got, we got kind of full slate. So I invited the Chamber of Commerce to come discuss some of the, the discussions we had in our general fund conversation. Rebecca Lewis, she's with Burns and Mack. She'll be here to do a little presentation on kind of what we're seeing in our sewer treatment program, as well as how we can control some of the odors and corrosion going on in some of our lift stations. The reason she's here at a workshop is because that blends into our utility funds, which will be working those budgets, water, sewer, street. Barry and I are also working on some CIP discussions. I know we wanted to talk about that a little bit. So it's gonna be kind of a packed agenda. And that's, Maria graciously fell on her sword, but I kind of told her that water code might have to wait till September, because we're gonna have a lot to talk about in August.
Seems there was something else you brought up in your report, and I can't remember what it was.
The volleyball court.
Yeah, we can bring up, we can bring up the volleyball court as well. What I, what I might do is have Marty sketch out something at the rec center, just so as you guys drive around, you can kind of look at it and see what we really, what direction we want to go.
Are you considering putting it someplace else now that you've realized that's a flood plain?
A little bit. And, and being a good neighbor and all the other elements that go along with it, I think it's important we evaluate all our options. I, I talk, I think it's important to have one. It's just, I, I don't know if it's necessarily, I want to put it in the best location. I think if we have time, let's reevaluate and see where we want it.
Yeah, I would not want it right out my back door either.
All right, thank you.
All right. But the only thing I would say about that issue is, if you live next to a park, expect it to be a park, and it will have activity in it. So, and there'll be a lot of time to be nice and quiet, okay? But it's just like if you live next to a vacant lot, expect that vacant lot to be developed someday. And you don't really get a lot of vote on how it's developed. You get a little bit, but not a lot.
I was gonna make a comment about the flip side of the coin of us just, there's two people that are allowed right now talking about it being in their backyard. It's not in their backyard. It's in the park. But it may be a little closer to their house than it was before. It was in that park before. And there are people that live in that neighborhood that have voiced concerns to me that they did not want the sand volleyball court removed from their neighborhood. So that's the flip side, right? We've got people that are allowed that used it and benefited from it and want to keep it. And we've got a few people that, at the last minute, are, are raising their voices. And I'm not discounting their voices, but there is a flip side to that decision. And I, I know there was recommendations made by several other folks that have used those, those specific courts and also the tennis courts in Bel Air Park. And there were suggestions of maybe considering putting it at the rec center. I'm, I could see that potentially being a good spot. But I also want to be mindful of, there were people that were used to having it right there in that park, just two hundred feet from the location that we're proposing relocating it to.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Like, I'm kind of split on that a little bit at the moment.
Well, I understand Mr. Henry's reasoning for looking at other options because of the, of the flood issue. So.
And that's, that's fair.
That's really a dam.
It's fair.
Right there where that is, it's really a dam. It doesn't function as a dam a lot, but, but when the rains come heavy, it's a dam.
Yep.
And that's what its purpose there.
That's a fair reason.
Yeah.
To at least consider, do we shift it? If it stays in that park, does it move somewhere else? Because we're battling the, we moved it because we didn't want it to be close to our safety surfacing. And now we're battling because it's in a, sometimes it floods situation. So you're gonna constantly have pros and cons to any decision. So I'm just saying that we should evaluate it more. And I'm glad that you've staked it out, given us a chance to look at it. And maybe we could consider, is the rec a better location? Would it satisfy all the pieces to the puzzle or not? But anyway, just wanted to say that.
If you put it down farther west, you were talking about a smaller court, but the smaller court fit farther west, north to south?
Marty, do you want to?
It's still in the dam.
No, well, okay, it's behind the dam. But the problem is, the problem is where they marked it out, it's in the spillway of the dam.
Right, exactly. That's the way to.
See, the playground is behind the dam.
It's like the overflow low spot.
Oh, go back. Oh, that's.
That's pretty good.
They're both the same, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty good right there. Because you see where the, where the lake is.
So, yeah, keep, well, you can, if you're gonna go east and west, sure, you can put it right there.
Take out a bunch of trees.
And that's in a higher spot, right, Marty?
It's in a higher spot.
Yeah.
When you hit the ball, it's gonna go back into the wooded area there, or it's gonna go towards the lake there. So.
Right. Again, pros and cons.
Right. So nobody wants it east and west. They want, are.
People want to take trees out.
Well, that's why I was asking about the smaller court, though. Would that solve some of the problem of the trees in the lake? Or, because that's quite a bit smaller.
The forty by seventy is, is the smaller one, the one outlined in blue. And the other one was a, what was it, a fifty-six and eighty-two.
But you're, the, the smaller court was really for high school.
It's basically a layout for a high school, too.
Right. So you have adults playing in this court. I know that. I've seen that.
Right. So that, that would be just a little smaller than what we had before. Not much.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the bigger court size, is that standard for something, or?
That's your standard. That's your standard dimensions for, for your volleyball court, yeah. Every time you look up one, that's what it says, standard dimensions for professional volleyball courts.
Professional, okay. Would that be the same as college size?
Right. So, that's your outside.
I did not realize high school was smaller, was what threw me at first, but.
Well, sand volleyball courts tend to be smaller than full-size, regular volleyball courts anyway. But, yeah. I mean, we can make it smaller to make it fit in a spot, particularly, specifically you've laid it out there. And we, I appreciate you doing that visually, because that does make a difference to know what it is, but.
Well, let's give staff a chance to look at what the options are and come back and talk about those.
The actual playing inside area is twenty-nine by fifty-nine. That's your actual playing area. So even by the, the forty by seventy, we're still doing bigger than that. You're just not gonna have that dive zone and four foot out on each side. That's what basically that's gonna do. So.
All right.
Very good.
The blue, the blue area we had on there, that's basically the best option we have at the lake. It's gonna be out of the flood zone. If you see that telephone pole back there by the pool, where, where the pool used to be, and then you got that one tree to the right of it, that's your flood zone. It floods right up to that. And so it's quite a bit away. The white, the white line is right in line with the flood zone. That's where it floods. So if you go up to the blue, it hasn't gone up that high, up to that area. So if we did it right there, and we did a little bit of grading and put kind of a little berm around it, I think it would keep everything out of the way. And I think I could do it in a way that it'd be safe.
Well, it might be fine. And it's farther from that guy's fence than I thought it was.
Right. It's quite a ways from the, from the fence.
Marty, how tall or deep are the concrete liners that are usually in the one you removed? I mean, part of it is visualizing that, too. I mean, there's only probably a half-foot of water that runs through there when it rains really heavily.
Right.
Is my guess.
Yeah, I'd have to look back at that.
So I mean, there's a, there, it's gonna be, I guess what I'm saying is the sand, wherever we put it, is gonna be contained in that.
Yeah.
Concrete lined box, you know, concrete box.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I think we'll be okay right there, to tell you guys the truth. I think if we do it where the blue outline is, I think we can contain it. Like I said, when I get done grading it, doing everything I need to do, I think I can make it look right and without any issues.
Okay, another question. If we put it there, is there any possibility of additional parking to the east of there? Or are we gonna be parking on the road?
Park at the park.
In front of people's houses.
Yeah, it's gonna be parked down by the playground area and walk up to.
Park on that new park road.
They're gonna park closest they can, is what we all know.
I know. That's, that's one of the neighbors' concerns.
So that would be really nice.
So.
Well, there's an issue. There is an issue there we need to consider.
It's right there.
Okay.
Well, that really looks bigger than what it, it is. When you're out there, it doesn't look that big. I'm telling you guys that right now.
Been down there before. I know what you're talking about. Yeah, there's not a lot of room there.
I'm just thinking who all we're impacting.
But, but the parking is gonna be something we need to, to think through.
Right.
Okay. Because while we may think that they should park in the parking lot on the west side, that's not the way people work. It's just like the problem we had with Isley. They weren't parking to go where they needed to go.
That parking was full.
But that's better.
Yeah, that parking's always full. When we were there just with the kids the other day, that parking was all full. So they already have to be way out in the street. So there's no way they're gonna go from that far street instead of being within twenty feet. That isn't gonna happen.
Well, if they're gonna have to park on the street, it doesn't matter which one, they're gonna be on the street in front of somebody's house.
Correct. But, yeah, it will load up, right? Parkwood is the one that's gonna get the traffic.
Yeah. So think through that and tell us what you need.
Guys, think about central park, putting it over there. That's a nice area over there.
That'd be fine with me, honestly.
I'll just throw that out there.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of parking over at the rec center.
Yeah, I would, I would say if, if we had a choice between the rec center or here, if we thought there's too many problems, the rec center makes a lot of, lot of sense. But I also don't want to just pull it out of that neighborhood, because I know people have voiced that they liked having it.
Yeah, I tell you, there's issues.
I, I know we want to go home. The last thing I was gonna mention, it was a resident had mentioned Bel Air Park on Woodlawn. Is that just off the table because of space issues?
So with Bel Air Park, my thing is we have a master plan we would like to follow, and it doesn't include a volleyball court. So I'd really like to stay with the plan with Bel Air Park. And so that would be my only objection. Of course, you can do whatever you'd like.
You have to take out a lot of trees, make it happen there.
Well, I think you could, I think our space, the thing becomes is you're gonna move it when you redevelop that park. Now, when that happens, we don't know. We'll talk priorities on CIP. Maybe that'll flesh out some of that. But anyway, the rec center makes a ton of, ton of sense just from parking and a lot of other things that you're talking about with east, west, and area. But again, you might rethink this, and maybe we can try to hammer out a solution at the next.
Let's give staff a chance to work it.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we'll move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.